All right, all right, all right. Let's go ahead and start this meeting. It's five o'clock. I'm gonna call to order the Palmdale City Council, the Successor Housing and Authority. Let's go ahead and get a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa.
Here.
Councilmembers Olson.
Here.
Benton Court.
Here.
Alakon.
Here.
Commissioners Fragasane.
Here.
And Bets.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, let's move on to Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. Mayor Pro Tim Loa, can you lead us in that?
Thank you, sir. Miss Hail of your heart. Say with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Madam Clerk, as we move on, can we please acknowledge the observances for the month of May?
The city of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: Mental Health Awareness Month, Military Appreciation Month, Municipal Clerks Week, 5th through the 11th, Public Service Recognition Week, the 5th through the 11th, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that's May 15th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We greatly appreciate everything that's done by people in those industries. All right, City Manager, is there any items to pull from tonight's agenda? None at this time?
None at this time.
Okay, none at this time. All right, City Clerk, will you go ahead and please play the public comment code of conduct and read the public participation statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules: Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
All right, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Mayor, would you like to see the cute critter first?
Oh, yes. Let's go ahead and see. Before we move on to public comment, let's go and see the cute critter. All right, hopefully those animals get a little more exposure and someone can go over to the county shelter and adopt them. I also want to thank the LA County Shelter as well for hosting the clinic we had here today. We had an excellent turnout. We had at least three or four hundred people attended it with Ms. Benton Court, and we look forward to doing more of those events. You want to adopt the Rockyoff?
Yeah, it's hard for me to lift those dogs. You know, I want them all.
Yeah? Well, I think we all do, but that's the point, so I hope somebody goes to the shelter and picks them up either tonight or tomorrow. All right, moving on to public comment. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak today, Madam Clerk?
Now is the time for public participation on items listed on the consent calendar, Sections 5 and 6. We have no speaker cards at this time for that item, for those items.
Okay, that's just for the joint consent calendar? For all of them, 5 and 6, the joint and the city council?
It's for both consent calendars, the joint and the...
Okay, so seeing none. Council's commissioners, would you like to pull any items from the joint consent calendar for discussion? Seeing none, so can I get a motion second to approve the joint consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. You have a motion, multiple seconds? Let's go ahead and vote. All right. All right, thanks for going. I'll give you guys a minute to relieve yourselves. Thank you, Housing Authority. And we are gonna go ahead move on to the consent calendar. That's item number six. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Or we can make a motion to approve the balance?
We'll go approve the entire consent calendar, item six.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Loa. I always get them mixed up. Second from Councilmember Benton Court. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you, moving on. Item number seven, public hearing. It was staff report, and at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Becky Bartlett, Management Analyst for Neighborhood Services. The item before you is requesting a public hearing for the 2024-25 Draft Annual Action Plan and proposed expenditure of funds. The Community Development Block Grant, CBG, is estimated at 1.4 million for the current year. The following proposed CBG eligible activities include: Saves South Antelope Valley Emergency Services, Housing Rights Center for Fair Housing Services, Section 108 Debt Service, Affordable Housing Infrastructure, ADA Improvements, ADA Sidewalks, Gap Closure and Ramps, Program Administration. The Home Investment Partnership Program is estimated at 540,000 in the current year's allocation. The following proposal, proposed eligible home activities include: Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, Community Housing Development Organization, Affordable Housing Development, and Program Administration. The HUD allocations have not been released, and the budgets are estimated at this time. Once the allocations are released, the budgets will be adjusted accordingly. Together, the annual allocation, program income, and unprogrammed funds for the total amount for CBG and home is 4,454,266. Public notices were published in English and Spanish on March 30th, 2024, in the AV Press and the city's website. The draft action plan could be reviewed on the city's website and in the Library Administration and Neighborhood Services. Staff is available for question.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna receive public testimony. Madam Clerk, do we have any one?
There are no speaker cards on this item here.
Seeing none, so we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and council discussion. Do we have any questions for our staff on this item?
Hearing none, I'll move the item.
We're gonna do a public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, we're good. I'll second. And this money's great because we get it every year. These are CBG funds, and we've got just as much as we did last year, right?
Right, and then when the actual allocations come out, then we'll be able to balance that.
Perfect. So we have a motion, we have a second.
Start voting.
Let's vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 7.2. City Clerk, can you please read the resolution of CC 2024-048 into the record, please?
Adopt Resolution Number CC 2024-048, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, approving a form of density bonus agreement with Mason's Palmdale Boulevard 150 LLC to facilitate the construction of tentative tract map 83359 located on the south side of Palmdale Boulevard between 50th Street East and 55th Street East, APN 3023002-084.
Okay, staff report. Do we have a staff report? Do we need a staff report?
Well, just very briefly. We continued this from your last council meeting. The notion of a density bonus agreement was new to a lot of people, and the council wanted to make sure that staff evaluated it thoroughly to make sure there was no relief available to the neighborhood that may oppose it and that we were acting consistent with state law. The good news is, the city is moving forward with its statutory duty to advance housing and reduce some of your RENA, regional housing needs, allocation numbers. The bad news, if it is bad news, the state has essentially stripped the city of any local control on this. When the project meets the statutory criteria, this project does. The minor concessions or waivers, city fire agency and city building department determined that the asphalt shingles are not in any stretch a public health, safety, or welfare risk. Red tiles are nice, but it's more aesthetics than function. The smaller parking areas doesn't present any risk other than maybe scraping your fender. None of the criteria, there's no effect on historic assets. It has shown that they need this to meet the economic requirement of affordability. Long way of saying, you've got probably 150, 200 pages that essentially say you must approve it. We've looked at every opportunity for the community, not to deny the rights of the property owners, but we looked carefully, and none of the criteria, existing litigation that's out there, any pending state legislation. Everything is in favor of encouraging housing through this density bonus, and our recommendation is you approve it.
Have a question?
Yeah?
Thank you so much for that report. I just had a follow-up question. There, last week, there was a ruling in the courts with regard to SB 9. So if you can, there's been some discussion locally about its potential impact on this matter. Can you just give an overview on what that is and how it applies?
SB 9, for those that aren't devotees of state housing law, and there's been no limit to them, essentially allows every single family parcel to end up supporting four units. You can split a property, so you've got then two parcels out of one, and on each, you can put your main unit in an ADU or JADU, which is an attached version. An ADU is separate, JADU is attached. It was determined last year that the old tradition that a family member had to occupy those units, that's gone. You can rent it to anybody. Again, the whole goal is to provide necessary housing. SB 9 was challenged by a group of charter cities. Now, if you're into local government, there's charter cities and there's general law cities. Palmdale is a chartered city. You, in 2009, adopted your charter, and that gives you a certain degree of home rule, more local control. And the four charter cities that challenged SB 9 said SB 9 intruded into their home rule ability as opposed to being a matter of statewide concern. The thing that's important is this case is just a trial court case at this point. A trial court case means it's the law of that case, but it's not precedent that we can point to. Court of Appeals in a published opinion makes the citable, the reliable precedent. So we have an indication that one court has viewed SB 9 as something not applicable to charter cities. There is a lot of discussion statewide among land use attorneys. I'll say it's leaning more to not, but the consensus is if this is appealed, that opinion probably won't stand. Almost every housing case that's been brought, whether challenging RENA, challenging housing elements, the courts have defaulted to the public policy of encouraging housing. So while we've got that, we're watching it to see if it's appealed and see what happens. As of right now, it may be the ghost of Christmas future, but right now, that's all it is. It doesn't give us any relief on this.
So there's no specific case law you can actually reference?
No, the cases, yeah, Bankers Hill 150, which is in your pack, and I included all of the cases cited through the magic of AI and Westlaw and all that. The cases all support the notion of density bonuses. Again, kind of repeating myself, but the state's policy and priority to get housing in as necessary and as available in what the state deemed health, safety, and welfare compliant regulation, that's what's before you. I can assure you, other cities who face these have had the same struggle of maintaining local neighborhoods versus complying with state law. It's a tough balance, but in this case, Sacramento's the 800-pound gorilla, we're the 5-pound chimp, and we lose.
Okay, let's receive public comment or testimony, and then we can move on to further discussion.
Avhad Brawley.
Good evening, Mayor Bishop, members of council. Nice to see you again this evening. I'll just keep it very brief. We appreciate the work that the city attorney put into the analysis. We remain very proud of this, our third project of this kind in the city of Palmdale. You heard from some of our residents of the other two projects at the last meeting. We did not encourage them to come again this evening. We believe we will be, and they will be, good neighbors to the existing single-family home community. We're providing benefits, including that signal on Palmdale Boulevard. If you've gone by the project recently that we've just completed, the roads are finished and capped, so we will continue to be sensitive to any construction issues going forward. We have our technical team here if you have any questions, but we appreciate your support. And I'll just make the point that I think we made last time. There's really no limit to the concessions that we could have asked for, and we limited it to those that we think were feasible and had the impact to make this an affordable project that could pencil out. So we did not get greedy. We did not do a lot of things we otherwise, or other developers, maybe would have done. So we appreciate and look forward to your support. Thank you.
Kevin Harbison, Rubella Holdings.
Good evening, Mayor Bishop and council members. I'm just here to answer questions. I wanted you to know that we're, Rubella is here, Mr. Phil Ram and myself are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Mike Parker.
Good evening, everyone. City Attorney, you did kind of steal my thunder tonight. I actually have an article that I did look at a little bit, and I'll read it from a more positive point of view. Judge rules in favor of Southern Cal cities challenging state law ordering more housing on single-family lots. A Los Angeles County Superior Court judge has ruled in favor of five Southern California cities that challenged a state law granting homeowners the right to split single-family lots and build up to four units of housing in one place. The background: Seeking to put local housing decisions back in the hands of city officials, Redondo Beach, Carson, Torrance, Winter, Del Mar filed lawsuit to overturn SB 9 2021 state law that increased the density of housing, allowing single-family neighborhoods. These zones make up about 78% of residential land in greater LA areas. The decision, in his ruling last week, Judge Curtis Kin wrote that "because the state law does not require new housing to be restricted to low and moderate income households, SB 9 cannot stand." Kin's ruling could potentially apply to cities across the state if it's upheld on appeal. What's next? So far, the law has been little used. The city of LA received 211 applicants during the first year of implementation for SB 9, according to UC Berkeley's Center Housing for Housing Innovation, but housing policy experts will be watching this case closely as it moves to higher courts because it tests how far state lawmakers can go in requiring cities to approve more housing in low-density areas. A spokesman for California Attorney General Rob Bonta said his office is reviewing the decision and considering all options in defense of SB 9. And the cities are able to go against this based on what's called the home rule doctrine, which is what they're fighting this on. And SB 9 has to have some narrow focus. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Janet Parker.
Hi, I appear because I figured he needed more than two minutes. And just to piggyback off what my husband said, I'm not arguing what they're doing, and everybody wants to make money, and I absolutely agree and support what you're doing. However, what I will say is that I don't necessarily want, as we talked about last time, to be surrounded by rental units. I just don't think, like, I'm new. I just moved here in November, and here, I'm here fighting for my home equity. And I just think that with what my husband just brought to light, what he has discussed, and the multiple options that could be before us, you guys were all elected by us, or at least them, maybe me next time, right? To speak for the city and what's best for us and our community. And passing it today isn't what's best for the community. I'm not saying don't ever pass it, but I think it needs time to investigate what my husband saw in this news clip and see if there's any merit and if maybe there's alternatives, or, you know, that we can do something else, go someplace else, whatever it is. But to pass it tonight, it's premature. I'm not arguing anything that Mr. Curly said. I'm just saying that there's other things buzzing out there that really should have our interest and our due diligence to investigate before anything's written in stone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carly.
So here we are, round three. We went to the planning meeting, we went to the city council meeting, we're back at the city council meeting, where your lawyer says, too bad, so sad, you guys have no say. Meanwhile, they are suing the state of California, and there's nothing stopping the city of Palmdale for doing the same. Therefore, there is no requirement for you to pass and approve this tonight because you have the ability to also go and fight for your rights because they're taking away your voting rights right now. They're taking away ours, but they're taking away yours more because you have more power than we do. They're taking away your approval to vote on these things and saying, oh, you have to. And, you know, our fancy lawyer over here keeps saying, it's a good thing. I'm sure it's not in your backyard. Hundred percent, it's not in the builders' backyards. It's in our backyard. And every new build that seems to be going up in Palmdale lately is low-income rental properties. There's apartments, there's housing, they're all over. But the whole point is that they are all over and not stacked because having them stacked is the negative impact. We're asking you today, as we show up in waves again, to have you guys delay the approval of this, maybe fight for your city's rights, and you can also sue the state to get your right for SB 9 because he seems like he doesn't want to put the effort in to go that route, but you guys are getting your rights taken away just as much as we are. And I think that you guys should fight for our city and make sure that we're doing what's right for our city because right now, they're busting up all these homeless people, and they're busting up all these low-income people to our area, and that's what Palmdale is turning into. Palmdale didn't used to be like this, and now it is. And the state is saying, we're gonna make it like that. Why? Because they're clearing LA for the Olympics, so Palmdale should become what that is now. That's not what we moved here for. That is not what our city is. And you guys need to go fight for the city's rights as well as the community's rights. And that's what we're asking you to do today, is to not approve this, delay it, because there's no harm in delaying it, but there is harm in approving it.
Mr. Mayor, just so the public is clear as it continues. As we said last meeting, all that's before you is the density bonus agreement. This project has been approved. The Planning Commission approved it. It wasn't appealed. They can go build it. It'd have to have red tile roof and a bigger garage, but this project is a given. There isn't something for you to not approve as to the project being built. SB 9 has virtually nothing to do with this. That's talking about single-family lots. This property, through your housing element of 2021, was designated for this density and use. That horse is out of the barn years ago. This, when people say, why this property? This was previously designated. Your housing element, that's compliant. Staff can identify the exact date. This land use is set for this, so that question's off the table. Can a project be built, this multiple-story and all this? That's off the table. Planning Commission approved it in March. All that's really before you now is, gee, can we let them have asphalt roofs and a smaller garage? It's got nothing to do with stopping the project or suing over single-family lot conversions. None of that applies. It isn't a project approval, it's a density bonus agreement approval that supports the concession and the waivers. That is it. So the project is a given. The only question is fancy roof or asphalt roof, which may be fancy anyway, I don't know. It's not a matter of willingness to attack the state or anything. The statutes run. So the public has to understand what they're asking for is impossible.
Okay. All right, let's go on to the next speaker. Thank you for that.
Corinne Stevenson.
Thank you again for our two minutes that we get to speak. I have to disagree with you. There is a way to reverse it. And I don't know if everybody knows, our tax dollars, 1.2 million dollars, was paid out as a loan to the developer. Any constituent, anybody who's been elected, if you took campaign contributions, recuse yourself. We may have to go to a lawsuit. It is it is wrong, what is happening. Our voices are being slammed. We're not being heard. Put it in your backyard. Whoever approved this, put it in your backyard. So I ask, front yard, I don't care. So I ask, front yard, I don't care, and SB nine does, two units per lot, not three. So are we gonna bulldoze down the ones? I don't have a Harvard education, I'm just a business owner. But please, please listen to our voices, be our voices. That's what we hired you for, that's why we voted for you. Be those people, stand up and help us, that's all we're asking. Thank you.
Tina Hughes. Tina Hughes.
Hello.
Hello.
So we were at the planning meeting and we discussed about the endangered species, and he was supposed to come back, the builders, and let us know what happened. So a couple of years ago, there were some ladies around our area, our, my backyard, and there are some bushes and Joshua trees that have endangered species in there, and they've been there for years, and the ladies had told my husband and I that they're not going anywhere, they've been there for a very long time, and they're not supposed to be bothered, tampered, or removed. We haven't heard anything back from the builders, did they just mysteriously disappear? Money is the root of all evil, so what happened to this? They're silent, you need to know what's going on because this is, this is our life that they're destroying, and they don't see that. It's very emotional that they're doing this to us. And I'm upset because I didn't know about this four or five years ago when this approval happened. We weren't notified. We would have all said no from the very beginning. So when did this happen? When we were all locked down and we couldn't speak? And now all of a sudden, it's already approved. That's not fair to us. We weren't notified. Please listen to us. Thank you.
No more speaker cards on this item?
Okay. And just to be clear, it was approved in March of twenty twenty-four for this project. There's essentially a two-week appeal period. It was not appealed, which means the project is then vested, it's final. The housing element was earlier that laid out what land uses are permissible. The folks at the Planning Commission may not have understood they had a right of appeal, that they could challenge it and bring it to the council, but once that lapses, the, the project's vested.
Okay. I think we have one more comment.
Yes. Tori.
So we were at the Planning Commission in March of twenty twenty-four, and when we were there, we spoke, we had a good presence there as well. Everybody spoke about our worries and stuff like that. And your director of the Planning Commissioner, which I don't even know, I don't remember her name because I don't like to hear it, she was laughing at us the whole time. Literally laughing at us, and we would come up and speak, and she's like, we're just talking about making a map, that's all we're talking about. If you go back and re-watch that video of when we were there pouring our hearts and souls out, like, please don't build this, and they're like, no, that's not us, you guys, the next step is you have to go to the, um, to the city council and you'll plead and, you know, you'll do that there. So they literally told us that night, and they, and she sat there and told the board too, because the board's like, well, what are we voting on? Like, we're not really sure. They said that in the video, if you go back and watch it again. So she then lied to, to the board and said, no, we're just making a map tonight, that's all we're making, that's all we're doing is dividing up the property. So we were all got to believe that that's all that they were doing, that's what they were voting on, and that's what that board was thinking they were voting on, was just dividing up a map. And like I said, she literally was up there smirking and laughing at us as we're like, wait a minute, this doesn't make sense. And then guess what? So we lost three to two, one abstained, one voted no, and the other three said yes. So that's how we lost that vote, which is pretty close to me that we could have got it if it was explained better to that board, what they were even voting on. So now we're stuck here, when we thought we were coming here to bleed out, you saw the group that we had here last week. We only had half of them here this week because half of them were like, well, I guess we can't do anything because he sits here and says, the state says what it is, and you guys can't do anything. They should have said that at that planning board meeting, that that's what the importance of it was. They let all of us and even the board, unless they were just making jokes too, but they let us, everybody to believe that it was here, that this is where we had to beg and plead to please save Palmdale, like spread it out, we need to spread out, not on top of each other.
All right, no more speakers?
No more speakers.
All right. So we're gonna close the public hearing, move on to oh, uh, it's a public hearing. Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
You probably have non-agenda? Okay. So we're gonna close the public hearing, and we're gonna move on to council discussion and figure out how we can further dissect this, analyze. Yeah, and some follow-up questions for the attorney. Bill, you ready?
Actually, my question isn't actually for the city attorney, it's, it's more for our city manager and our city team. I, it's, there, there is no question that since I've been elected, um, allowing for public engagement has been priority number one for me on all levels. Um, so when the community raises concerns about not being notified, that's a red flag for me. So I'm, if you could, I'm interested to hear, if you could just talk about, the April meeting at the Planning Commission was not the first step in the process, can you talk about the entire timeline of the process and also at every step, um, how we notify affected local residents in, in the area where the development is gonna take on this?
I will defer that to our Director of Economic Development to walk you through.
I have a follow-up question to that. Is there any possibility that any action by any staff member or any member of the commission misled the public in terms of, of the process for filing an appeal and appropriately addressing that in an appeal process?
Again, I'm gonna ask our Director of Economic Development, who's in charge of the Planning Commission meetings to this point.
So, um, to address your evening. Louise Scarey, Director of Economic and Community Development. The, in terms of the notifications, all of these projects require notification within five hundred-foot radius of where the property site is. Uh, that was all done in accordance, and I think the applicant will, will agree. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if you hold it up, but, okay, I, I will lean over, so, uh, there's a, there's a five hundred foot radius, so um, within where the project site was, so everybody received the notification in that area. Uh, there was also a sign that was posted there on the site that shows the day, the time of, of when the, uh, when the item was gonna go to the Planning Commission. And then what was the second question?
So, I just, if you need to go back a little bit further, when did this project get started? I mean, and then throughout that process, aside from the Planning Commission, were there other milestones within which we notified the, the local area that's being affected by the development?
Just like in general, for this project specifically?
Go back.
Yeah, so from a notification standpoint, when it, when it's ready to go to the Planning Commission is when the notifications take place. Outside of that, there isn't, um, there isn't a process, I guess, or to, to go out and for every single project that comes along, uh, because we don't know if it's a project yet until they've completed their checklist of items that they need in order to get the project entitled.
So do we require of, of the developer to do any sort of community outreach uh, before it gets to the stage where it's at the Planning Commission?
Do we require that? No. Depending on the type of project, so, well, we will recommend to them, you know, if, uh, to do additional outreach, it just depends on the project.
Okay, so the only, the only point at which the community can voice their concerns about the project is the point at which it goes before the Planning Commission?
At that point, we know it's an actual, because we get applications all the time for projects, and we don't know whether or not they're actually gonna go through with the full entitlements. So what we, I don't know how to phrase this, but like, we don't wanna create a practice where we're saying, hey, here's coming over, just kidding, they didn't move forward with the project, so we wait until a project's considered real, and then that's when the notifications and that process goes forward.
And then when was the original application submitted?
Um, I will have to check my notes.
There's, there's two phases of the project, right?
Right, so this is the second.
June twenty twenty.
June twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, so between June twenty twenty-three and April twenty twenty-four, there was no means by which we notified the community?
No, for, besides anything that's tied to the Planning Commission, I mean?
Yes.
No.
Okay, I, and, and thank you for answering the question, I guess.
I just want to be clear, there was onsite signage, there was notification within five hundred feet of the project, which is all standard practice and requirements for anything going before the Planning Commission.
And do those get mailed out?
I'm sorry?
Those get mailed out to the surrounding residents?
The five hundred feet do, there's an actual mailer that goes out, so.
Is that from, and can you define what five hundred feet is, from, from which point is like the outer barrier of the development or any?
All right, let's, let's, let's keep the, let's keep it.
So, so the reason why, the reason why I'm asking these questions.
Let's keep the course, okay?
The reason why I'm asking these questions, I'm concerned, and, and maybe we don't have the opportunity to do it with regard to this project, but moving forward, I'd like to see if we could get a report back on some recommendations uh, for, 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 for future development, on how we can, um, create more of a public engagement process when, when developments like this, uh, come down the pike. I mean, if it's been in the works for over a year and the community may or may not have been notified, and if it's five hundred feet, maybe we expand it to a thousand feet, maybe we do something else, but just some consideration of additional recommendations to keep the, the, the affected community engaged.
I think it was staff.
If I might to, uh, really jump in and meddle with this. Land use under a, a government regulation, a city, is first driven by what's called your general plan. You have a plan for land use, a housing element. It's called typically the constitution of the city. It's a twenty-year horizon, where is the city today? Where should it be in twenty years? And the general plan lays out the steps, the goals, the objectives, all to achieve that vision. That plan for land use designates, as of today, all the land in the city, some is for residential, some is for higher density, some is low density, some's industrial, some's commercial, some's retail. The whole city is designated what's going where. So that is your first step. Those are done through public notice, they go to Planning Commission, they come up to City Council, they're mandatory under state law. So that first step, anybody could look today and say, what could my neighbor be, what could this change into? So that general plan, plan for land use, is the first thing you look at, and that's been done several years ago. So that sits there, uh, an applicant comes in and says, okay, if I want to buy this piece of property, what can I do with it? So first they look at the general plan, and it says, oh, I can put residential. Then they look at the zoning, which fine-tunes the general plan, takes that broad residential, it may be single-family, it may be multiple-family, it may be whatever. So you look to the zoning districts that's applied to any particular piece of land. That gives you the particulars, the details. Could be big lots, could be small lots, could be apartments, could be tall, short, whatever. That regulation is what an applicant looks at and says, hey, I want to build something. General plan says, here's the land uses, zoning says, here's the details to those land uses. If they think they can make it work, they apply. If they don't, they don't. So as far as that, that first question of why here, or why is residential here? The, the community adopted the general plan years ago, and that footprint, that direction is there. So you look at that, then you look at the zoning, and that then takes you to the project-specific stuff. So the Planning Commission got the very project-specific. We want to carve the land up this way. Here's our map, tentative maps just serve to subdivide the property. They put on conditions for street improvements and drainage and all the, the infrastructure that comes with a project. So now you've diced up the land pursuant to the housing element general plan, pursuant to zoning, pursuant to subdivision map ordinance that you've got. And now in your code, you've also got a density bonus ordinance requirement. So you go through those first three, you got a project. Now they say, okay, under density bonus law, we can get some extras beyond zoning, but we have to do certain things. For this, they had to have ten percent of the units set aside, uh, for low income, the affordable. That's the price they pay to get those variances, those waivers. That's what's before you tonight, so there, there's an incremental process. Uh, to your point, uh, council member, you can change notice, you can make it a thousand. So a lot of cities do that, so do it five. How you go giving notice is in your discretion.
That's exactly why I raised the point, I'm very, thank you for the overview of the general plan in Palmdale twenty forty-five, we adopted it last year, so I'm very familiar with it, but getting back to my question about public notification, uh, I would in fact like a report back, and I don't know if the, my colleagues on the council would be supportive of considering it, but at some point, maybe we, we re-evaluate exactly how our process unfolds, so that there is additional, um, public engagement throughout the course of the project, not at, you know, the, the final step, not at step Z or Y, which was the Planning Commission, then it comes to us when, when apparently we have zero jurisdiction or authority to intervene and, and, and redirect the project. Um, so I just, if we could just focus on, at least from my perspective, the notification part, the public engagement part.
So, uh, again, absolutely, you're, you're right, that, if it's the will of the council, we can make that notification, whatever that amount that makes sense. Just a couple of things that I will just note is, uh, we've had several conversations about trying to be business-friendly to bring housing opportunities to the city. Each one of these adds another layer of time and money and, and other things that we have to take into consideration. The other thing, especially when affordable housing projects, um, you, it seemed like you were alluding to, hey, we can, on more sensitive projects, we have to be very consistent in terms of which projects get the notification for, so it would have to be across the board because what I don't want to get into.
Not suggesting that, that it's, we cherry pick which developments we do outreach for engagement on. So I agree that it should be, if we adopt some, a new process, it would be under a resolution or by ordinance, uh, so that applies, uh, equally to all developments in the city. Um, but as it relates to the cost, I think it's, it's well worth, well, whatever, but, I mean, depending on what we're proposing, it's well worth the expenditure to ensure that everybody in our community is properly notified over the course of the entire development project, so that, that's just my position on.
I remember a few years ago, we actually went through a whole process where we changed our permit signs, and we made it so each use has a different color, and we made them a lot easier to read and, and, you know, it's.
They're hard to miss.
Yeah, they're hard to miss, but I know, you know, government connectivity and with government has always been difficult, especially in our community, people work, they, they commute long hours, it's, you know, it's easy to drive past a, a huge eight-foot permit sign and, and just miss it, it's, it's almost like, you know, you drive past it every day, you don't see it, so I know outreach has always been a thing I've been an advocate for because I, I feel like engagement is something we're always struggling to see until we have a problem like this, and then the council chamber is packed with neighbors. But I'm gonna turn over to Mayor Portomlo, I remember you said you had a question for Louis, right?
And I'll direct this to, uh, Mr. Curly. Well, last time, I wanted to know whether there was any, uh, litigation pending, any appeals or anything else that, uh, was challenging the, uh, density bonus law. And I believe you researched that.
We, we've looked at it, um, all the cases that are available are in your packet. There is nothing that's known out there, I mean, nobody's, there's no buzz, there's no nothing on challenging density bonus. Um, density bonus as a statute's been around, I'll say about twenty years. Each year it gets tightened up in favor of housing, but it's not a new law, and it's not by any stretch something that any advocacy group, BIA in the building industry views it favorably, uh, all of the housing advocacy groups do it favorably, uh, and many or most of the cities do because it helps them accomplish meeting their RENA numbers. So from a, a government side, it's, it's a helpful thing. And to that end, there is nobody, um, I mean, I, even the, the, the advocates like ACLU and, and the, the folks that look to make sure things are fair and proper, uh, they seem to have no quibble with it, it's.
Okay, so this, it's compared, for example, to SB nine that was challenged, and, and, and then the trial court, uh, stopped SB nine in its tracks, uh, because it said basically there's no rational connection between the purpose of SB nine and actually delivering, uh, housing for the unhoused. And so the judges made that, that ruling, but we don't have anything, no similar litigation concerning the density bonus?
Absolutely none, sir. Absolutely none, sir, um there's a couple of things that uh that I think that in um the report, uh it, it's indicated that the land use decision of a planning commission becomes final after ten days after the approval. So that was done on March fourteenth. Now, so ten days would given, would have given to March twenty-fourth.
Someone has raised here, one of the speakers has, has stated that there was actions on the part of, of, I guess, one of the staff members that may have misled uh the public, the, the persons that were concerned with this in that neighborhood, that might have um led them to think that all they had to do was appear at a council meeting and challenge this, instead of actually following an appeals process. So I think we, we need to, we need to look at that, because uh if in fact it was anything, and I know, I am not challenging our staff a- at all, I, I've known staff members for many, many years. Um and I have full confidence in them, but sometimes inadvertently, which I might be doing at this moment. Um you actually say things that um that could lead to litigation, and then we were all back at square one. So that's something that I think we, we ought to make sure that there was nothing that was said that would have misled the person that would have been the, the appellant's here uh to challenge the decision of the planning commission. Because if there was, inadvertent or not, then that, that's a concern.
Well, uh, uh that would be, again, the, the council's prerogative to continue it, uh another meeting, and have us go back and dissect the, the video, the tape, whatever format it is, and see what was said, and see what, if any, impact there is from what was said.
Right, now, all of that being said, right, even if we changed all the rules to five thousand feet within uh the project, right? What we're being told is the state of California, the legislature of the state of California, the governor of this state have mandated that this is, this is something that must be provided if the uh developers meet all of the different criteria that are, that are required. So even if we changed everything, at the end of the day, we end up with the same thing, being told that we must approve.
I believe that's the right answer, yes, sir.
And the other problem, even, even if there was a mistake made by a uh staff member that misled the people, and I think we should go back and take a look at that, to make sure that didn't happen, but let's say that that did happen, and the public was misled, and that's the reason that they didn't file their appeal. Even if they had filed an appeal, we're still faced with the same directive from the state of California.
You have that, and you would have the uh competing issue of the, the applicant's rights, they have a vested approval, there was no appeal. I don't know, I've actually never had to look, if there was a duty at a hearing to advise of appeal. If it was misled, I mean, there's been many cases, uh more in the tort claims, not, not land use, but other um government challenges that misinformation or bad information i- is unfortunate, but it doesn't usually change the result unless it was calculated.
Well, what I heard from the, from the citizen here that spoke about that particular issue, was that they were told by the staff member that what, if they wanted to challenge this, they would just go before the city council and challenge it there, and, and that might have misled in terms of actually uh filing an appeal, and going through the steps.
Have you watched the video?
No, I didn't know there was such an issue, uh Alex, my colleague attends the planning commission, I'll check with her, of course. But uh, but no, I, I didn't know there was an issue of this sort.
Well, I, I didn't realize it until it was stated, stated here.
I think last council meeting, we had the discussion about, there were some concerns raised about the happenings of the planning commission, so I, I would have assumed that that was part of the evaluation, when we, when I said I want clarity on what exactly is going to be brought back, I think your response was, in a nutshell, we're going to look at the entirety of everything. Um and so I would have assumed that that would have included the planning commission.
When you have a final decision not appealed, most law is misinformation by staff is no fact. That wasn't mentioned, um so no, that's not something we'd look at.
Okay, but Mr. Curly, if I may, um I, I think what would happen, let's say that we go, but take a look at that, and somebody made an inadvertent statement, and it misled uh the persons that are challenging this, then it's a do-over, right? We, we'd go back to the planning commission, and the planning commission makes its decision, probably the same decision that they did now, and then they file their appeal, and it comes before us on an appeal, and we're still faced with the same problem with a directive from the state.
Is that true?
By the way, it would get to the density bonus question, yes, would remain the same. Where it could change, I suppose, if in fact, and, and again, I'm not certain, we'd have to research if a mistake meant a do-over, it, it may not, um but if it did, again, you'd be looking at the track map first. The track map sets the project, think of it as the body of the cake. The density bonus is kind of like the frosting, it goes on, but it isn't the, the substance of it, it just adjusts or refines it, so the density bonus, uh yes, if you have a valid project and meets the criteria, the answer is the same.
Okay, so let me understand, the planning commission then has discretion to disapprove the proposed track map?
Yeah, they could, they can put in criteria, they can find it is inconsistent with the general plan, I mean, they, they have discretion to analyze the project.
To an extent, to, to an extent, and my understanding of the, all the requirements that were needed for the project, they met, and so there's very, there isn't a lot of discretion when it comes to.
Hypothetically, if it did, if it didn't pass the planning commission, would it end up at city council for us to vote on it anyway?
Yeah.
Because they file an appeal, and we'd end up right back in the same spot.
I can't speak on behalf of it, that would be my guess.
That's hypothetically.
That would likely happen.
Eric, it looks like you want to say something.
I want clarification to that point that uh Mayor Potem made. So tonight before us is just the density bonus, so if we go back, I think we absolutely should investigate that allegation, but that won't have any effect on the density bonus, so hypothetically, we can approve or deny the density bonus today, investigate that allegation, and then revisit the whole cake, not just the.
I, I would recommend you not, if you approve it, you've now given rights, we don't want to have to try to claw those back. If we're uncertain, let's maintain status quo, kick it for a, another meeting. Let us review the tape and see what implications there may be, um and, and advise you of that in continuing the decision on the frosting.
Okay, it is my opinion that we have to do that, because this isn't the first time I heard that allegation, I have several emails that uh I'll forward to you, um that that's an alarming allegation, and I think it should be looked at.
I'll make a motion to continue this matter, uh with a specific instruction that the city attorney's office reviewed the planning commission hearing, to see if there was anything there that misdirected uh the persons in that neighborhood.
I'll second. Alright, let's vote.
And then I guess it'd go to the next, uh the first meeting in June? Did I give you enough time?
Well, we, certainly the next, uh what is it, the fifteen?
Two weeks.
We, we can do it by the, certainly the next council meeting.
That'll be, that'll be part of the motion then, and you agree with that, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, motion, second, alright, let's go ahead and vote.
And before you vote.
Well, we already voted.
Uh-oh. Well, if you want to reconsider, um apparently the city manager reminded me your next meeting.
I would recommend that we move it to the June first meeting.
You have budget and.
Oh.
Things that.
So we can go to, what meeting would you recommend?
I would recommend the first meeting in June, which is.
Okay, that's mine, right?
Well, the votes have already been cast electronically, so I'll make a motion to reconsider the item. Yes, I can.
So the first meeting.
Go to the, go to the June, that's fine.
So now we're reconsidering it, so then Mayor Potem, if you want to re, restate your motion with the revised date.
I do, thank you, in other words, that the uh matter be continued, as I stated before, for a review by your office, city attorney's office, to see whether there was anything stated at the planning commission that would have misdirected uh the people that are opposed to this project, and uh, and then make a determination if that's something that uh that needs to go back to the planning commission.
We will look for bait and switch.
And I would like to restate my second.
Stay there.
And this is, and it goes to the June first meeting.
The first meeting in June, whatever number it is.
June first.
Start voting.
Got it. Alright. Moving on, that takes us to item number eight, our appointment, discussion nomination, possible uh appointment to a member of the AV fair. Do, is there anybody who wishes?
I would like to nominate somebody if I could.
Can we just get a, the staff report on?
Sure.
On what the JPA is and what their role would be.
For everyone to exit, too, we'll give everyone a minute.
So what are we doing?
We're waiting for a staff report.
We have a staff report, maybe a little background information.
Sure, good evening, mayor and council, before you, not tonight, is the consideration, discussion, nomination and appointment of one member of the Palmdale City Council to the Antelope Valley uh Joint Powers Authority of the Antelope Valley Fair. Uh this has been an item that has been um discussed previously at uh the joint council meeting with the city of Lancaster that took place last year, uh in July of last year, and as part of our commitment to the multi-agency resiliency center at the fairgrounds, uh it was agreed upon that due to our financial commitment that we will be providing to the fairgrounds, we would uh be approved for a seat on the fair board, and that has been approved by the se- secretary of ag at the state level, and it is before you tonight for consideration of that appointment.
And if I may make a statement, uh I've been involved with the fair uh now for several years. Um and a, a component of that resiliency center is going to be a community center that I've been working on to get finessed, and I believe will be constructed at the same time. So I would ask uh that the council consider me to be that appointee, thank you.
Alright.
I just want to say how important it is that we have a seat at this table, we fought long and hard for this, we've paid for this, um and I absolutely think that Richard would be an ideal candidate for that position, so.
I do too.
Yeah.
I think that's a good nomination.
Anybody else want to throw out any nominations on there?
No, I'll second that, I think Richard has been working uh close with them and has, has uh all the right stuff to make a difference.
Appreciate it.
No, I just wanted to say that there was an allegation last week that we just gave money to Lancaster without any sort of concession whatsoever. But first of all, the fairgrounds is owned by the state of California. We gave money to the fairgrounds, and in return, we did receive concessions, we received this seat on the fair board, the Antelope Valley Fair. Palmdale has never had a seat at the table for the Antelope Valley Fair, we now do. We negotiated a revenue share agreement, shall the um resiliency center ever make profit, there were several concessions that we negotiated that night, and this is one of them, and I'm proud that we finally have a seat at that table.
I, I also think, thank you very much, um I, I believe that uh the Antelope Valley Fair could do more uh to attract and, and bring in people from the South Antelope Valley, uh to participate in the fair, to um enjoy the uh premises that are already there, there's facilities there um that could be used, excuse me, more by our Palmdale residents and other areas of uh, of the Sou- Southern Antelope Valley, so um I believe uh advocacy in that respect, to get more participation by the entire Antelope Valley in the AV fair is, is a very important consideration. But I, I do believe that uh, that there's been some concessions, and I think that uh we're going to have a, a stronger fair um through the, through the agreements that we've made.
I think it's important to recognize that, uh we were looking at it yesterday, that there's only two fairgrounds in all of LA County, LA County, and that's one in Pomona and one in the Antelope Valley, so that's pretty significant that we have a, a fair, uh access to fairgrounds right in our own backyard. And uh it should be more of a regional draw, we should be partnering with Santa Clarita and some of the closer cities in the valley to draw them up here, because it's a much longer drive to go to Pomona and their fairgrounds than it is to come to us.
I've, I've also heard a uh, well, several comments um by the community that in the event uh that we should have to use the resiliency center in a, in a catastrophic event, that it would be difficult for people in uh East Palmdale or Little Rock or further out uh towards Perp Blossom to reach that, well, it would be a lot easier to reach the AV fairgrounds resiliency center than to go down below, or to go to some other place that may not even have the facility that is being constructed at the AV fairgrounds. Um so what we're talking about are people that are being displaced either by an earthquake or fire or some other disaster, um where, for example, in the nineteen ninety-four quake, the fourteen and the five completely collapsed, and Antelope Valley was completely disconnected from, from the rest of Los Angeles County. And uh it, it actually brought us something that was very positive, and that was uh that Metro actually linked up um Antelope Valley uh with Los Angeles through MetroLink. And uh, and that was done in a matter of days, uh and eventually after several, I think it was at least a couple of weeks before you could reach LA through any kind of meaningful highway, I mean, there were still some roads to get there, but for the most part, we'd been shut down. And so if anybody was displaced by that earthquake or a future one, or fire, uh and the connections are, are destroyed in accessing um down below, then it would be much easier to get those folks to the resiliency center where they would get housing, services and other uh benefits, and that's a reality, it's happening. The state of California um is investing a substantial amount of money, uh Los Angeles County has, the city of Lancaster has, the city of Palmdale is, and uh there are other um entities in the Antelope Valley that are also going to contribute millions of dollars to make this happen. Construction is about to begin, and I believe that it is an exciting prospect uh for the city of Palmdale to have a seat at the table. Thank you.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Mayor Potemloa to the seat, let's go ahead and vote.
Thank you all, thank you, I appreciate it.
Don't get him, Richard.
Thank you, Eric.
Alright.
Thank you, Eric, appreciate it.
I'm number nine, city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council again, uh please visit, I'm just gonna say this for um uh time's sake, please visit our website to see all of the things happening in the city. I have in front of me in the next two weeks, two pages worth of events that are happening throughout the city, so if anybody says there's nothing to do in Palmdale, uh I would argue otherwise. A couple of things that I will highlight is we did just begin our farmer's market last Friday, that will run through October. It was very well received, very well attended despite hurricane-force winds last Friday, and that will continue every Friday at Oasis Park. Come on out, there's food trucks, there's fresh produce, there's uh makers market, uh and also um music, it's, it's just a good time, so we're very excited to relaunch that program uh that hasn't happened in, in our community in, in quite some time, several, several years. We also have a Cinco de Mayo fest- Cinco de Mayo festival happening at the same time this particular Friday. Inkwell Book and Art Festival, uh we have some organics waste workshops. Um a couple of items of note that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention is that we just received an award of merit for our sustainable transportation plan through the American Planning Association, so congratulations to staff for all of their hard work on that program. Um today, actually, or maybe it was yesterday, I think it was yesterday, uh we swore in our city staff, LASD, and the city prosecutors um that will now be working to criminally enforce our municipal code. This is historic for our community, and I want to take a moment to recognize that, um that we are going to be prosecuting misdemeanors ourselves through our municipal code um to try and keep those crime numbers down in the city of Palmdale, so this is a, a, a big moment. Um so, and we have actually, I think, uh processed our first criminal citation today, so. Uh and then the last uh announcement for today is we have uh unveiled our concert. Uh and then the last uh announcement for today is we have uh unveiled our concert lineup for the twentieth anniversary of the amphitheater coming this summer. Would so please uh visit our social media page, sign up, like, follow, all that good stuff to find out exactly who's coming and get your tickets early. It's a great season. Thank you.
Alright. Item number ten, council reports, announcements, requests for future agenda items.
I've got a couple.
Yeah, alright, let's start.
So um just at the outset, in terms of announcement, actually, let me hand these out. I think we have to hand them out to everybody. My, I don't know, but this has been the tra- tradition and practice. So this is my monthly report. There are, you know, several um events that thank you, here's yours. There are several events that I attended. Um but one that I wanted to highlight uh last night was the uh Council District Five Town Hall. Thank you to all of those who attended and voiced their opinions, thoughts, concerns, uh ideas shared with us about their organizational missions. Uh it really was a refreshing conversation. Uh we had a packed house uh and I'm thankful for that and I I I want to commit to the community uh that I will continue to engage uh as 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 often as possible. Uh so that was the first town hall, but is absolutely not going to be the last. Uh so I want to thank everybody who helped put it together and contribute uh to its success. So thank you. Um and then as it relates to uh future items on the agenda, one uh was sort of in in the aftermath of the town hall, thinking through, there was a lot of 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 community um concern, uh suggestion, support for um a a grant program, the rein- reinvigoration of the grant program under the Measure AV. Uh so in thinking about that, uh we also had a conversation about Measure AV appointments uh to the commission. Uh as we know, uh Council District Five did not uh get the opportunity to appoint a member to uh the Measure AV Commission. However, Council District Five residents equally participate and contribute to Measure AV's uh revenue uh generation. So I would like um a report back or a future agenda item on um amending the municipal code in whatever, by ordinance or resolution, however uh you deem necessary, to require that each coun- each council member uh from each respective of the five districts gets one mandatory one appointment to each uh to the Measure AV Commission in the same way uh as does the planning commission and so forth. Uh so that's one. And then um Caltrans, uh we all know that there has been some horrific uh accidents on uh Pear Blossom Highway and um this has been just sort of an incessant uh reality for the Antelope Valley and the city of Palmdale. Um so I would like to encourage um that the city manager bring back a letter to our next city council meeting uh directly to Caltrans to to initiate the conversation about how to implement cooperatively some traffic and and speed mitigation measures uh and public safety measures so that we can uh you do what we can uh to have a seat at the table and start the conversation uh about how to protect uh our residents and those that visit our our community along Pear Blossom Highway. Six six fatalities uh in, was it a twenty-four hour period, uh is catastrophic. Uh and we, I know we can do better, but we need a voice at the table. So if we could uh uh bring that back for a a letter to be sent to Caltrans formally on behalf of the city for, at least for the council's consideration, um that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Uh I'll piggyback off of that. I had a conversation today with Captain Zagorski of the Antelope Valley CHP office. I asked him for stats and data that we could use to incorporate into that letter. So as soon as we get those back, I'll make them available. Yeah, it's horrific. Six people within ten hours, something's gotta change there and um I know it's not within the city limits, but it's people from our city being affected, people that have to, that's the only way east. And it's just unacceptable conditions, so I I'm with you on that. Um I'll keep the law enforcement theme. I also had a meeting with the ALAD's president. They're very supportive of our efforts and initiatives and things we're doing to uh relieve some of the pressure from our deputies that are understaffed and overworked and fatigued and tired. It makes them less safe, it makes us less safe. So uh I'm glad they're supportive of that and I hope that there's more that we can do. Um I would like to, I remember we had a conversation about potentially uh joining Lancaster's lawsuit on the sheriff's department in the county. Can we revisit that?
So they actually filed suit on behalf of all of the contract cities in the county, so we would be a member of any resolution that is rendered.
Okay. Uh Sheriff's Boosters Car Show, that was great. It's a great setup there at uh Drytown. Uh I'd like to see more events like that there. That was great, good for the Sheriff's Boosters. Uh let me start back at the beginning of the month. The mayor and I went to Pueblo, Colorado for the stakeholders tour of the Transportation Technology Center in Pueblo, the only one like it in the country. Um with purchase orders going in for Brightline and high-speed rail. The chance for us to mimic this and make it better and add a manufacturing component could be thousands of jobs for our residents. So I think it's something the council should continue to voice and support. Uh AV Edge Summit was a great opportunity to showcase what we've got going on in Palmdale. I think we wound up Lancaster, if I say so myself. Other than that, I had a great conversation with Vicky Ventura in the AV chambers about possible opportunities for the city and the chambers to work together to smor- support small businesses. So I'm looking forward to those continued conversations. That's pretty much it outside of the, uh there's a whole list of things, but I'm only highlighting a couple. Uh the I Serve Youth Leadership Panel, that was a great opportunity to have a sc- discussion with youth interested in government. Um I hope we didn't discourage them too much. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Cora-Tamoa?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I think that uh we, uh in this last month, we had several opportunities to showcase Palmdale. Uh one of them was at the AV Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Lunch and Learn speaker. I was uh honored to uh to make that uh presentation. Um and uh then we had the AV Edge Twenty Twenty Four Spring Business Summit presentation. And and I thought that was a, that was a good presentation highlighting uh what the city of Palmdale is doing in terms of development and and bringing um better amenities and services for our residents. But I thought we're, that we really shown as far as the um presentation by a video was at the West Antelope Valley Education Foundation Dinner, which just happened Friday. And I thought the video there really highlighted what our city is doing uh in respect to development, uh in respect to uh what we always talk about at at election time, to bring jobs, bring jobs, bring jobs. And and I I think the city is on a good course to do that and it was highlighted during that. That was a, that was a fabulous event. It was a great fundraiser uh for the Westside School District. Um and uh uh that was good. Something uh significant that's coming up uh for the sheriff's department this year is the twenty-sixth anniversary of our station being here, right? And that is going to be celebrated on June twenty-sixth. Am I, is that the right date? Captain?
June twenty-sixth?
That's the right date. So there'll be a celebration, twenty-six years. I ca- I I can't believe it. I remember when we were talking about uh there just being a bunch of sand up here, which kind of compared us to the beach uh in that way, but it was desert sand as opposed to the beach. And uh Captain, I mean, uh Sheriff Baca came up here and he first started talking um about uh getting a station built in the city of Palmdale. Eventually, it came to pass and now we're gonna celebrate twenty-six years of that. So I hope, and I know that our city is uh assisting with that. Um and I believe we're also going to assist the Sheriff Boosters of Palmdale uh with a grant that will be uh passed along to uh uh to this uh captaincy here to um in order to celebrate that twenty-six years. Poppy Festival was a was a very good event. Uh on Saturday night of the Poppy Festival, we had a cumbia night at the Poppy Festival that was attended by some of our people and everybody had a fantastic time. So um I want to piggyback on the discussion regarding Pear Blossom Highway. I think it's an opportunity for us to talk to Assemblyman Correo um and to address that. It's a dangerous road. We've been talking about the dangerousness of that for a long, long time. There's been improvements. But it seems like the fatalities due to high-speed uh travel through there causes accidents that are so unfortunate and disastrous for so many people. So what do we can do to uh address that? Um and talking to both our assembly members and our senator uh to see what we can do on Pear Blossom Highway to stop the killing. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off that one thirty-eight. I I've been out here since eighty-three and that's stretch of road has always been a problem. Yes, they've made improvements. But clearly, they haven't made enough. Uh cars are riding smoother, faster. Uh people are more impatient now after being locked down with COVID. People just want to fly. I mean, the the driving that I've seen throughout the Antelope Valley and one thirty-eight is just off the hook. These people are just driving crazy. Um I urge everyone to slow down, especially if you've got kids in the car. Um it it's speed and uh distractions are are just deadly. So I I hope that they do take a a look at one thirty-eight and figure something out. They need to do more, absolutely, especially because it's it's our residents. It's it there's only one reason you're on there. It's either because you're coming to Palmdale or you're leaving Palmdale. So it's our residents that are being affected by this. Um I attended the uh AV Chambers Waste Management Landfill Tour. You you probably would think, well, why would you tour a landfill? Oh my gosh, there's so much going on out there. Um took a busload of us out there. Showed us how the operation works, showed us um the recycling center, the all the things that they have for disposal of your electronics. It it was absolutely a fascinating tour and they're doing a ton out of waste management to be environmentally friendly, to keep the the dump functional for another ten years. Because, you know, what happens when that thing fills up? You ever think about that? Where's your trash gonna go? So they're doing everything they can to keep um it as a functioning landfill and they're doing great stuff environmentally. They have more things coming out, so I appreciate that that tour. Um I went to the Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters uh car and bike show, beautiful cars and um I know I talked to many of the the car owners and they were very happy to have their cars on concrete instead of out in the dirt. Um it it was a little breezy that day, so they spent a lot of time and money on those cars. And they don't want them covered in dirt and dust, so they were very happy to have it where it was. And the shaded structures, so you didn't have to be out in the sun and the cars didn't have to be out there baking in the heat. They were really happy to to be there, so I hope that we utilize that more often. One of the best events I went to this month was the Vet at the Park. And again, that was for animals. It was right there out in front of the city hall. It was so popular. I, they started turning people, I think it opened at nine and people were lining up at five AM. And they were turning people away at like nine oh five because they had, I think we had a cap at two hundred and fifty animals. And by nine AM or nine oh five, they had two hundred and fifty animals. So this is clearly, if you could have seen the line all the way across the park, it was packed, cats, dogs, all kinds of um people looking, you know, to get assistance for low wa- low-cost uh vaccinations and chipping and and that sort of thing. What I would love to see, and I don't know if we can, but Chuck, I see you back there. Maybe next time we do this, and I hope we do it again, maybe we can have animal control come out wi- with a a pet adoption center. I mean, you got pet lovers there. Take one home with ya. You know, find a buddy for your friend. So I think that we can incorporate those two events and and I beg you to have more of those events and maybe you can partner with the city of Palmdale. It was a huge need. I don't know if you saw the videos of that day. There were so many people here. It was an absolute success. And it's nice to see pet owners out there with their pets, taking care of their pets, making sure they have what they need. And and I appreciate the county participating in that. It was a really, truly inspiring event. Um also, I went out to a a Sci-Fi Network event where they're going around town and they're they're doing like food trucks and that type of thing. Sci-Fi is putting in the fiber, I don't want to, fiber optics, you know, so that you have faster internet. The problem that they're having is that people are not paying attention to their their notices. Like, hey, we're gonna be putting fiber in on your street. There, people aren't moving their cars. Well, you can't put fiber in the street if you have to work around a car. And in a lot of neighborhoods, folks, cars are getting towed for expired registration, uh for multiple other things that you know, basic violations. But please let them put that fiber in so you guys can have, you know, fast internet for your kids and your gaming or whatever people do on the internet. It's it's really, really important. Please move, uh if, just move your cars the day that they're doing it. Please do that. Great weather is coming. Great opportunities for people to be outdoors. Don't sit behind the screen. Get out, enjoy our parks. We've got wonderful parks. We've we've upgraded a lot of our parks. Please take advantage of that. Um as far as requests for future agenda, I kind of wanted to get an update. I I hope I have the right name. It's um Visit Palmdale? That the program that we're, like, the the tourism?
Visit Palmdale.
Yeah, I want, I want to get an update on that. Where, how are we doing? Because honestly, I haven't seen any signs, billboards. Maybe I'm just missing them. If we could just get a quick update next, next time for that, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good idea.
Alright, thank you. So a lot of the same events, we all got to have the privilege to attend. I'll go down the list here and just talk about some of the notable ones like the Transportation Technology Center in Colorado. That was a real good uh that was a real good indication of what we can do with the space that we have out in East Palmdale and the jobs that can be created. Especially seeing that uh Metro has a lot of work ahead of them as far as um rehabbing buses and creating new railcars and all that. So that would be great to land that here and have all of those cars and buses built right here in Palmdale. Uh I had a meeting with Joe Ennis from Positive Lifestyle Movement. We're working on order, organizing some cleanups. Uh s- Edge Spring Business Summit presentation, that went really well. That was an opportunity to show the entire Antelope Valley business community what's coming in to Palmdale and all the good stuff that we have to look forward to. I I thought we presented very well and and uh I thought that that couldn't have gone better. Uh Vet for Veterans Evening Community Support, we did that later in the afternoon. And uh that was a packed house and it's good to see that veteran support is alive and well in our community and we were there to be a part of it and huge privilege there.
And contributed six thousand dollars.
We did. We each contributed from our discretionary funds.
Two thousand pieces.
Yes. Uh NCTC, um lot of transportation stuff. I brought up the fourteen freeway again. Always pushing to make sure that we get uh completion on that as fast as possible and and any things, anything that that the the problem that I had this time that I brought up to Caltrans was the noise it makes when you drive down the freeway. I know it's not complete yet, but yeah, when you drive down the freeway, it makes a noise, so.
That's not a musical road?
No, it's not. It's not a musical road, but every time we go to these transportation meetings, I'm I'm taking notes and making videos and and making sure that I show Caltrans everything that's going on on the fourteen from Palmdale all the way to Lancaster because we all use that freeway to get around town. It's it's pretty much the best and only way to get across the two towns. Um the I Serve Youth Leadership Panel, I attended that with uh with Mr. Olson and some other members of the community. It was good to see uh, it's our first year doing this, right? Yeah, and it's good to see the kids get engaged. Uh following Saturday, we went out and we planted trees, we laid sod and we helped uh fix up one of the parks. Uh Poppy Festival, that was great. Unfortunately, there's no super boom this year. I guess we'll have to wait till next year.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
Yeah, so next year will be better. Uh we had a couple of car shows at Oasis Park. Great job to staff and everyone that that has helped organize and start utilizing the park and the facility over there. As you can tell, there's great feedback from the community and and lots of resources and shade structures and everything we need to continue to hold events there. So that was a great job to start utilizing that area. Brightline West Groundbreaking Ribbon Cutting. So it looks like the Vegas train is no longer a quagmire. It actually looks like it, they're gonna start building it. They have half of their funding and it's gonna go right to Apple Valley and then it's gonna be within fifty miles of Palmdale. So it gives us the opportunity at some point to explore building a track metro or whatever that future may look like. But it's one step closer to that economic development coming closer to our city. Um Farmer's Market, well-attended, even in the wind. A lot of people uh came out to the Farmer's Market, so it shows that we needed that. So kudos to the city manager for helping us put that together. Vet at the Park was also really well-attended. I think that helps, gives us some direction on how we want to work with the county shelter and and what we want to do as far as deploying resources for animal services and how we're gonna do that. And I know that they're gonna do two events in Palmdale. We already had one and they had one later in the year, but I wanted to reach out to the supervisor's office, Chuck. I think it's office phone, there he is. And then and then see what we can do about having more of those days in the park and uh partnering with the animal shelter because I think that was so beneficial for the community. Um in regards to the to the traffic and the safety, it, there's no Um, in regards to the, to the traffic and the safety, it, there's no doubt about how dangerous it is to drive around town. If you drive around town, people are in a hurry, they're distracted, they're on their phones, they're not paying attention. They have their kids in the car, they're eating food, texting, doing all sorts of stuff. Unfortunately, it's become so easy to be distracted in the car these days. I think, uh, maybe we wanna explore maybe doing a, um, a safe driving campaign? Something to, to maybe reinforce the fact that it is extremely dangerous and we need to pay attention when we get behind the wheel. I know it's easy to forget and we're all probably guilty of it at one time or another, but a little reminder, a little campaign from the city, I think, would probably go a long way. And if you did hear if there was a kerfuffle on the fourteen freeway this morning, there was. There was another accident and the fourteen freeway was closed down for three or four hours this morning and nobody made it to work again. So I think we need to maybe explore doing a safe driving campaign with the city for our residents. I think that would go a long way. But with that, that's, that's it for me. Yeah, absolutely.
Um, just real quick in, in thinking about, there was comments about the Farmer's Market. Um, and it's not necessarily a city asset, but we recently had conversations about implementing a policy and we adopted a policy by which we name assets. I don't know, I don't recall specifically if it includes events, but, um, maybe the, the council could consider, um, naming the Palmdale Farmer's Market, uh, in honor of Mr. Kimball Goodman. Um, he was a master, certified master agriculture farmer. I don't know exactly the title, his formal title. Uh, he has since passed away, but he was an avid advocate for access to fresh food. And every conversation that I had with him, uh, he was, he was, when, when, when are we working on the Farmer's Market? When is it gonna come? When is it gonna come? I know it was, it was a priority for him. I think it would be an incredible tribute to his life, his legacy and his work if we could name that. So maybe we could bring that back too. Thank you.
So, uh, this morning was the, uh, Palmdale Boosters, Sheriff Boosters meeting. And, um, uh, we discussed with the captain, uh, the, the graffiti problem and the fact that, um, we get it cleaned up and within days, the graffiti is replaced. And I believe I asked before, and I don't know what the exact status is, of, of perhaps having an agreement with, uh, these owners, these property owners that get hit over and over and over again, uh, where we can, instead of waiting to give them notice and, and get back to us that we can get our, uh, graffiti abatement program, uh, out to address that. And for example, I, I can give you the old, uh, military store here on Palmdale Boulevard. We clean it and then almost immediately, uh, within a couple of days, graffiti's back up again. And the same thing over on, um, Palmdale and Division, right behind the St. Kerr Station there, on that, uh, east facing wall. Uh, it gets cleaned up and within a couple of days, there it is again. And it takes a while for our staff to get over there and clean it up. I think that the more we wait on graffiti, the worse it's going to become. And the other part that I think, and I brought it up last time, and, uh, and, and, and I brought it up to the captain today, uh, that we should have a campaign, uh, to stress, uh, to parents that if their son or daughter has caught graffitiing a, a, a place, vandalizing it, the parents could be responsible under state law to pay for that. Um, and that's something that I think if we did that. Somebody told me that they were behind somebody at Home Depot with a young person that was buying several cans of, of spray paint. I thought, I thought that was outlawed, that, um, that persons under eighteen could buy spray paint. I, I thought that was the law. I could be wrong, but, uh, with somebody going through and buying all these cans of spray paint, there's not very many multiple uses that you could use. I mean, I can think of some legitimate ones, but there's also a lot of people that are using it for illegitimate purposes.
So we actually have an RFP, uh, that we are issuing for private property graffiti abatement, uh, that will be out on the street if it's not already, uh, within two weeks' time. I, I believe it might already even be out. Um, and that's being posted for a thirty-day period and we'll select a vendor that will come likely before council, depending on the dollar amount, for, uh, private property graffiti abatement. We also have a regular enforcement program for all of the big box stores that sell, uh, the spray paint to make sure that they are locked up, they are cited. If they are not, our code enforcement is actively, uh, working with them regularly. We do as much as we can. Uh, most of the time, you know, they get their hands on it one way or the other, whether those cages are locked or not. But, uh, we do continue to do that proactively with all of our big box stores as well. Um, so, uh, oftentimes it's back up even in hours, so, uh, once we abate it. So, uh, there are hotspots that we're aware of, we track them and that's what we will be addressing with the RFP. Additionally, we do currently offer paint supplies and paint gift cards to private property owners that are the victims of graffiti. Uh, and they can contact our code enforcement department to, uh, partake in that program as well.
At the Public Safety Forum, we're talking about, uh, with the graffiti team, some of the efforts they made. And one of the things that, that you said that caught my ear was they, they go and they check the stores. One of them told us, remember, they said that they would go to the other side of the aisle and reach behind the cage. So they had to have the stores start putting mesh or, or blocking the back of the cage. So they were finding any way possible to get their hands on the paint. But kudos to the code enforcement team for going continually checking and then finding the ways that they've been creatively being able to sneak the cans out of the store because that's part of the problem. So as long as we can try to attack it from all angles, hopefully we can slow this, this down because it's still the top complaint I get, is the graffiti.
Large retailers are, uh, locking down their underarm deodorant. It seems to me that we ought to be able to lock down the, uh, spray paint. Um, I was told today that, uh, that's, that's the joke of the day, huh? I went today?
Yeah, you actually went, yeah.
That in the city of Bakersfield, that there's an ordinance that, um, compels the property owners to self-report within a seventy-two hour period, um, and, and address the graffiti on their property. And if not, they're, 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 they're given a fine of forty-five dollars. I don't know how accurate that is, but that's something I was told today.
We have the same thing in our municipal code, that seventy-two hours to abate it or it's fined. It's rare that we actually enforce the fines if it's left unattended for several weeks at a time. We have a, we have to walk a fine line with private property owners. We have to get a letter of agency to be able to go onto their property to actually abate the graffiti. So we, just because it's, we have the ability, doesn't mean we have the, um, approval to go on and abate it, so, um.
That's exactly the point I'm making though. If we have a continuing letter of agency to those properties that get hit over and over again.
Yes.
I don't mean everybody in the city.
It's already drafted and part of the RFP process for the abatement that we're going out to do. It's up to date and ready to go and we can take it business by business as we need to abate graffiti.
And I know that it's a burden on the, on the business owners, but it's a burden on the entire community to see this, I don't know, this disfigurement that goes on. I, I, I really don't want to see us become in so many areas of, of Los Angeles. And it's funny that you can go on Wiltshire Boulevard and then cross from Los Angeles into Beverly Hills and all of a sudden you don't see any graffiti. And, uh, I don't know what they do there to be successful, but we don't want to, uh, turn our city into an area that is debased with all of this, this stuff that goes on with, uh, on the walls. And it's over and over again. We need to address it, we need to become more aggressive.
So just to dovetail off of that, at the Public Safety Forum, there was this conversation about, um, priv- private property owners and immediate abatement and whether or not we, um, require the enforcement of the seventy-two hour mandated period to take it down. I really did appreciate code enforcement's position on that. Um, that they provide as much flexibility as possible and work directly with the affected property owner so that it doesn't become a burden. I mean, seventy-two hours is a really stringent timeframe, uh, and to then immediately go out and cite a property owner for, uh, graffiti that they had no part in putting up. I mean, people could be busy, people could be on vacation. I just, I really did want to, to recognize and reinforce that code enforcement is really amenable to working directly with the property owners to, to, to find, uh, an amicable solution so that it's not overly burdened. We're not citing property owners. They didn't, they didn't contribute to the graffiti being on their walls. Um, and so it's, it's really just a partnership. And so I, while I, I understand that we have the mechanism and the tools within our municipal code to enforce issuing citations within seventy-two hours, I think the approach that we're taking now is the best one.
All right. I don't disagree with that at all.
We agree. All right. Um, I think that's, yeah, I think we have public comment, unless Eric's got a joke.
No, but I wasn't gonna do this, but here I go.
All right.
I almost didn't mention Brightline because the disgruntled former mayor made a bunch of comments online that we wasted city resources by going. Put in your FOIA request and you'll find out that we didn't spend a dime of city money. The mayor and I went to support that project because it's, could potentially be a great thing for our community. Yes, under his watch, we lost out on it to Rancho Cucamonga, but if we play our cards right and we make it easier for our residents to get to LA and make it easier for LA residents to get to Palmdale, we can be a player in that game. We can build an interim station that's ready for high-speed rail that Brightline would love to come connect to because it's profitable for them. So we absolutely support that project. I think there, there's a transportation revolution happening in the state of California and I would like to see Palmdale be a player in that. Have the revolution happen here.
That's right. Okay. Public comment.
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Excuse me. That's right.
May Day is today, in case you don't know it. And there's a popular misconstru- misconception that immigrants start at May Day. It's not, it's an American holiday which began in Chicago during the Haymarket riots in the eighteen nineties. And many of the organized labor's rights, such as the eight-hour day, were produced by anarchists, socialists and communists, not just organized labor. And it, it's a day that we should honor. Um, the second thing I was gonna say is that I was very much taken aback by, uh, Laura Bettencourt's remarks at the last meeting. Uh, I don't know if you think you're a Marshal Tito of Yugoslavia, but for you to interrupt AV students and AV high school students who are making a comment about homelessness and for you to say, I'm gonna talk to your teacher to discipline you. I've been here, I've been teaching thirty-one years and, you know, I, I know better. I'm gonna, I'm gonna penalize you for bringing up that issue was very disrespectful. You're not a dictator. You don't dictate free speech in this council's chambers. Get it straight. People have a right to find out what this city is doing about homelessness, which is nothing. Over there in Lancaster, they bought all the, the dirty, uh, uh, motels there and created fifty-eight units of affordable housing. You're not doing anything here. There's a bunch of hotels, uh, motels along Palmdale Boulevard that you could convert with a state program, a project home cream to create, uh, affordable units and you're not doing it.
I, I, I know we typically don't engage, there was a lot said there, but as, as it relates, as, as it relates to housing and homelessness, yes, the city is doing something. I spoke about it yesterday and we've been working on it for quite some time, ever since, um, I was elected. Uh, the Knights Inn, which is on Palmdale Boulevard, it is a current blight. It is now going to be reconstructed and, and repurposed into creating a hundred individual units of housing. And when that item was brought before this council, we made it very, very clear that the requirements for program admission to, to, to be housed in that facility was that you have to, to, to demonstrate that you, um, were unhoused in the city of Palmdale or in the Antelope Valley, uh, so that we prioritize those that are unhoused here, uh, in our city locally. We, the, the project was approved for funding by the state. Housing, California Housing and Community Development is in the process of, uh, developing its contractual terms and it, they will, they will execute that in the very near future. But yes, the city is doing a lot with regards to, um, housing, uh, those that are, that are the least fortunate among us. And a hundred units will go a long way at cutting down the approximately three, is slightly over three hundred unhoused during the last loss of, uh, uh, count. That's, that's almost thirty-three percent. Uh, so we're, we're moving full steam ahead, one step at a time. We can't solve the problem with one foul swoop. But to say that we're, the city is not doing anything as it relates to servicing and providing a roof, uh, for those who are currently unhoused, I think is an inaccurate statement.
All right, Laura, did you wanna say something?
Boy, do I wanna say something. Mr. Hernandez, I am so ashamed of you. Everything that you said was an absolute misstatement. I don't know if you were sitting back there planted to say that so somebody could ramble on about, you know, housing numbers. I don't know what your agenda is, but you've made it a point to attack me at every single council meeting. What you said today about me speaking to the students to explain to them the process was so factually incorrect. I don't even know where to begin to respond to what you said. I'm embarrassed for you, sir. That's all I have to say.
All right, next one.
Azrael.
Uh, first I rise, wanna elevate my severes to heaven, give me perfect praise to the great God Allah, Father of the universe, love, truth, peace, freedom and justice. Honors to all his prophets, Jesus, Muhammad, Buddha, Confucius, Nabuchalali. They gave me my nationality and divine creed, um, letting me know that I'm not black, negro. Um, colored folk or any name that deluded slavery because those names were given to slaves by slaveholders in seventeen seventy-nine, lasted eighteen sixty-five during the time of slavery. My name is Azrael, I'm a member of the Moore Science Temple of America. I'm fairly new to this community, so the first thing I like to do is just come to the City Hall and get, oh, also wanna give honors to the mayor and your council partners for upholding the city of Palmdale. Um, yeah, the first thing I like to do is, uh, come to the City Hall and see what resources and see, because my divine duty is to uplift the fall of humanity, starting with the community by using love as a guiding principle, standing on five highest principles, which are love, truth, peace, freedom and justice. So if you see a bunch of red fezzes out here, we're not shriners, we're the Moors within the Moore Science Temple of America. Um, I think that's pretty much it, man. Uh, my name is Azrael, I come in peace and I leave in love, gratitude.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Diego.
Hi, my name is Diego. I live in the second district. Um, first I wanna appreciate what Richard, uh, said about the, uh, Metro Link. I use that frequently and what Laura said about the waste management, electronic waste. I also use that frequently. Um, with respect to Austin Bishop, um, I don't think the fourteen is the best and only way to get around town. I just took the, uh, the bus system from District Two to City Hall today. I was texting, I was talking, there was no danger because I was riding the bus and a good bus driver was driving the bus, so.
You know, that's good to hear.
We gotta encourage, uh, bus safety. Um, last, uh, or in February twenty-first, I saw that you approved a legislative platform uh, with the principles that you want your state legislators and federal legislators to follow in the best interests of Palmdale. It talks about, among other things, uh, building social trust and trust with law enforcement. Uh, part of the laws that we all have to follow are federal laws. And whenever the Senate approves a treaty, we also have to follow international laws. Um, the International Court of Justice has found that the current government of Israel is likely committing a genocide in Gaza. Uh, therefore, the USA should immediately stop selling or they should definitely stop gifting weapons to Israel when we have a lot of budget needs in this country. Um, I know that's not your jurisdiction, but obviously you recommend things to your state and federal legislators. If you could please maybe pass it on to Mike Garcia, that a lot of people in Palmdale are concerned that the US is engaged in unlawful acts. And I think the law is so important. Without law, you can't really trust, you know, that anything's gonna happen as you expect it to. And I'm happy to speak with any of you if you wanna know more about what laws at the federal and international le- level are being broken and how Mike Garcia could help stop it. Thank you.
You were wrong, Chris.
Yeah, there's several items. Um, we're gonna real quick refer to this gentleman here. Uh, Israel didn't start that war, October seventh. These Islamist fascists, they attacked Israeli, uh, compound, uh, park. They grabbed children, threw them in the ovens, raped the women. Israel did not start this. All the money, every time we go to Arco Station, put gas, the money goes to Ayatollahs because we don't have any restriction on the Ayatollahs selling oil to the world. And Ayatollahs are sending it to Hamas and Hezbollah and Houthis. And these, uh, Hamas are a bunch of terrorists. They have no regard for human lives. Israel has no other choice than to defend themselves. Now, with the, uh, with their regards of, uh, we're, we're telling them not to defend themselves? You know what they're gonna do to every single Jew if they conquer Israel? That's, we gotta stand a hundred percent st- solid behind it. As far as the, uh, graffiti concerns, real quick, let's do what city- As far as the uh graffiti concerns, real quick, let's do what city of Lancaster is doing. When I called Ken Mann and I told him my building was uh, uh defaced, he was out of town, but he called the crew. They have a crew specially for this. Within twenty-four hours, they came and cleaned it up. It's not the property owners like me that the, the buildings are being uh defaced like that. City of Palmdale could have the crew. Anybody calls, immediately do it because it really has a lot to do with the city of Palmdale. I'm sorry. Uh I really wanna quickly uh mention you guys were ahead of me about the traffic on Parablosom Highway. I live on Thirty-second Street, Street, as you know, Austin and Richard, you know. And uh my kid is nineteen years old, my wife and I, every time we come from zero speed and unto a sixty, seventy miles an hour on Thirty-second. I please beg you from uh Twenty-Fifth Street East to Swap Meet, at least there, reduce the speed to fifty miles an hour, please. Appreciate it.
Vicki Ventura.
Hi, good evening Mayor Austin Bishop and council members. It is so great to be here. And I'm here before you to say, Councilmember Eric Olson, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank you for scheduling that meeting, for giving the Antelope Valley Chamber of Commerce the opportunity to start conversation with you and City Manager Rhonda to see how we could collaborate, how the Chamber of Commerce can really make a presence in our community, to go into the community and take those resources that we, they are so needed, especially the small business community. Um and I would love to collaborate, see how we could be proactive in regards to this graffiti, right? That the b- small business owners are facing on maybe a day-to-day, right? Um so that we don't penalize them, but we offer solutions to them. I think that under our corner is right on as about, as far as to offering solutions and not penalizing them. Um I also wanna thank everybody on behalf of my husband that attended the Love and Right Car Show. Drytown was just a perfect location for that. And I, um Oliver vendors and everybody, everybody attended were very happy with the location, the setup. The Palmdale Sheriff Boosters organized that event, so we were very happy with the turnout. And also Laura, I wanna thank you for that amazing uh tour that we did with Waste Management. It was a lot of fun. You know, the Antelope Valley Chamber of Commerce organized that, so we wanna be able to organize more programs like that to educate the community as a whole, not just the small business, but the whole community as a whole. So I thank you for your support and look forward to working in the future with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
We have Chuck Murphy.
Thank you. I dressed up for this. Mayor, councilman, councilwoman. I think this, the town, I had the opportunity to be at the town hall over the weekend, or weekend, it felt like a weekend, yesterday. I had some real positive things I think took place that, that, that community came out, they talked, they had a lot of things on their mind that they wanted to get out. And um they, they, many of them had the opportunity to do that. But as you know, me, I always have something to say, which though I did have an opportunity to add a little bit of information about California together, I never got the opportunity to speak about Measure AB or Music and Kids. Though they were recognized by the councilwoman here, she did mention that. And I really appreciate that. I was really nice to meet the guy that you really would rather have on Measure AB. So thank you for that. But my biggest question, after I walked out of all this, went home and actually, I, I was actually hitting, texting uh the councilwoman before I left the parking lot. But I don't wanna take away from the positivity of, of what this town hall was all about and what it was meant to be. But the first question I would probably ask is, who legally covers these meetings if they were to start happening on a regular basis? Is it Palmdale, the city of Palmdale? Is this an extension of the city council? I'm just curious. I think it's something we need to really look into because I know that my desire isn't so much to sue anybody for anything, but I also know that you cannot pick and choose who's gonna speak. So thank you for your time. I really do think that was a positive thing that all of we, you could be doing.
I, I just, I feel compelled to, to respond at least to, to this point. Thank you so much, Mr. Murphy, for being present last night. You, as you noted, you did have an opportunity to speak and then I, I recognized you for your leadership on the Measure AB Commission as well as for your work with Music and Kids. Um you happened to leave a little early. Um I Okay, well, I don't know when you left, but the event was not over. I made very clear at the event. I said, I'm happy to stay as long as necessary so that everybody's heard. And um I, I think everybody who was there knows that I said that out loud. I said, I'm here. We can continue this so long as people have questions. Uh and, and so I think it's, it's slightly um uh unfair to say that, that there were selective people who were not provided the opportunity to speak. And I apologize if that was your experience. That was never the intent. I, the, the whole purpose of the event was to hear from absolutely everybody and to provide opportunity for, for every single person, whether you represent an organization or not, as a resident of the city of Palmdale or the Antelope Valley, just to give an opportunity for their voices to be heard uh on whatever issue that was affecting uh, you know, their lives. So again, apologies if you feel like you were in so, in some way excluded. Uh but I do appreciate uh you, your participation, but please know that everybody was welcome, nobody was excluded. Everybody had the opportunity uh to submit um uh either in writing a question or comment or offer that verbally uh during the meeting. So thank you again for all of those who participated.
Alright, next speaker.
Sylvia.
Hello, I'm Sylvia with uh a member of the NAACP. And I'm here to speak on Camacho Auto Sales, Camacho Mitsubishi and King of Credit. These three entities, they're working together to cause havoc on the community. They're altering documents, perjury, fraud or deception, synthetic uh identity fraud, forging documents, lying to finance companies, altered autometers, identity theft, selling lemons, misrepresenting, um requesting down payments and calling back, uh stating that they owe more uh deposit, illegal repos, they doing this young old to the veterans. Um they're also removing contracts out of glove compartments while detailing cars after the deals, changing uh the advertised price, failure to disclose material facts about the vehicle, selling a used car as new and much more. So I'm asking you all to do a thorough investigation on Camacho and their tactics on the community because they're, they're really deceiving the community with these three different uh entities and they're using them as a umbrella company. Thank you.
Alright, next speaker.
Mr. Vico Vargas, we've received your slip and you've already had the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Well, he's always got something to say.
I'll second that motion, Richard.
Alright, you all. Yeah.
Uh first off, congratulations Laura for having a seat in Antelope Valley Fairgrounds. And I hope now that we're gonna see Rex Paris and Marvin, we're gonna see Richard Lowe's building there too. That would be, I'm looking forward to. But uh this uh Eric, uh Austin and when you talk about the uh Transportation Center, I mean the uh Brightline, I was there at Dale Evans Parkway and Fury Freeway fifteen. Uh it's amazing opportunity. All the finances are in place, like as you know. Now, if you're living in Moore Park, Santa Barbara, Semin Valley, Santa Clarita, Westlake Village, Woodland Hills, if you wanna go to Las Vegas, what are you gonna do? If you have a station right here in Palmdale, uh what, what would be like P twelve and Sierra Highway, we have an area and you're gonna leave all your motorhomes, cars, boats right here, take the ride and go to Las Vegas. And in twenty twenty-six, when the Olympiad is coming to Los Angeles, can you imagine all the tourism coming here? And if they know, they can come here to Palmdale, leave their cars and go to Las Vegas. It's just very great opportunity to seize. And uh the, the land skyrocketed in Apple Valley. I, I found a couple of pieces there. Smallest one, two million dollars a piece at already. So if we can develop a station here, you got our uh support. Thank you so much.
Hey, that's not right. You let Freddy Cooper speak twice and you wouldn't let me speak again. Why does he get this act, act?
Because I'm Freddy Cooper.
No more speaker.
No more speakers? Okay. So it takes us to the adjournment. I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight, for those who came in person, those watching online. Uh I wanna thank the staff, back there, all of you. Thank you. Uh another great month of events and things happening in the city of Palmdale. There's not a day that goes by I don't feel absolutely blessed and privileged to have the opportunity to serve on this council and work with such a great group of people. We may not agree on everything all the time, but the fact is that we, we're here because we love the city of Palmdale and we wanna see what's, what's best for the city. So at that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Until then, take care of yourself and each other.